No, exactly like number one after the pledge.
No, it's the discussion items.
Yeah.
That's not, no, number one is discussion items. I have a lot to discuss tonight.
Oh boy.
I should have eaten before I came, I suppose.
That's just for the end of that.
It's just for the end one.
That's for the end one.
If we're streaming it, we might as well record the whole thing.
Oh. So then we're having battery by then. Perfect.
That would be Dave Shulley complaining.
You're spicy today.
I don't have a gavel. And we're, now we're waiting for Kyle. I'm not starting the meeting till we get Kyle gets here.
Oh, yep. We are.
Alright, now we can start. Call the meeting to order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You weren't late, we were just picking on you Kyle.
You're actually a mineral.
I was just picking on you. Thank, thank you. Made me smile. This is the November work session, regular work session. This time we have discussion items for non, or agenda items. There's nobody here to do that, so we're gonna move on to Kyle who's got a few things on the agenda for us tonight.
Yeah, so first thing is activity fees for ninth graders. Right now, we have it split seven, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth. Seven, eighth, ninth is seventy, ten, eleven, twelve is eighty. I'd like to put the ninth grade with the ten, eleven, twelves. We split our teams junior highs, seventh and eighth grade. Our high school teams are nine, ten, eleven, twelve. And then the other reason is, the high school league now governs ninth grade. So they're part of the high school league, same as a senior, same as a junior, all the same rules, they're on the same team. I think it would just be cleaner and easier to charge them the same amount as a senior. So I would put it to eighty.
Do we, when we have kids that play up from seventh and eighth grade, we don't see any of that anymore? I mean, do we charge?
Uh, hard, in, in, in like cross-country, we sometimes do. Wrestling, we sometimes do, but they still pay the same junior high fee.
Okay.
Um, yes. But it'd just be for a blanket for a ninth grader that comes out to play sports.
When are you thinking of this taking place?
Uh, A- A- ASAP. Yup. So it'd be for the spring, I guess, preferably, or if possible.
Yeah, we can't make it an action item until December, and I would assume all your basketball winter sports have started.
Correct, they're all signed up.
So I, I would assume that the next, next, next activity would be?
Yup, yup. Well, when I was filling out activities this year, I split them into nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and then they were like, oh, we gotta double check with the board on that, so that's why.
So we're already doing it?
No, we're not. I'm gonna, well, yes, but I'm gonna refund ninth graders that have paid the extra ten dollars until it gets passed, if it gets passed.
Okay.
Yes. It's, it's not a lot of ninth graders that have signed up. Yup.
And then you have, uh, activity announcer?
Yes, I'd like to add a position. I thought it was already on there, announcer, to get them paid when they come and help announce and create a great game day atmosphere for our high school sports and programs.
Flat rate or hourly?
Uh, flat rate. Same as, I, I figured a, like a book taker, twenty-five dollars per event.
I'm not seeing much opposition here, but we can't make any.
No, totally, yeah, totally fine. I just, I went, I need to bring it up.
We can add that to the December one.
Yup. We'll add all this to the December.
On the consent calendar for December, but this is a great time to have any discussion if you have any questions for Kyle about these positions or fees.
Academic eligibility policy.
Uh, since you put that on, I just double-checked where that's at. Is that? Is it reading, you had to read it or?
Well, right, right now, we've, um, have had our readings. We just need to get to a regular board meeting.
Okay.
Next one in December here, before it become an action item for you. So again, this would be an item. Then, do you have any questions for the process that Kyle is recommending that, that we change to? And really, the change is he's increased the number of, the, the frequency of the checks, but we have a little bit more time for the student athlete or the participant in the activity to get that grade up a more, um, basic.
And actually, we can't vote on this because it is listed in the agenda as an action item. So if you'd like to call a vote on that, I'll need a motion in a second.
So move.
Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second by Roger. Discussion.
Wait. I just don't know if that's a mistake that's an action item because this is a work session, so it's just, to make it cleaner, I would, I would recommend that you rescind the action or the, the motion.
I'll rescind my second.
We've, we've done action items on board, work sessions before. I, here's the thing, we're, we're gonna be, um, another month, I guess it's, was it two weeks? I guess it's only two weeks.
December third.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead and rescind.
I rescind.
Okay. Roger?
I rescinded. Sorry about that. I'll just be cleaner on, no.
Okay. Sounds like everything's good. It'll be on a consent calendar this week after the December board meeting.
Cool.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jim? You have our approval to leave. No, I'm kidding. Jim wanted to give you an approval on something, I was giving you approval to leave.
He goes running back.
Thank you.
We got Jim and Jolene that, uh, now talk about the capital projects.
Just getting comfortable.
This was, uh, an item that, that we wanted to bring forward, just the things that, uh, information that we have gathered so far because, uh, we wanna stay ahead of the project game. We wanna make sure we get contracts signed by vendors and get things on the calendar for a start. Um, and then with the new capital projects levy money, we thought we'd share with you how we're prioritizing things, um, with this going ahead. You have the document that Jolene has passed out for you? Starting with, uh, the twenty-five, twenty-six, these are things that we're wrapping up this year. Most of these things are closed out already. We just have a few items that, uh, are waiting to come in that we have ordered. So the real work, um, that we're gonna talk about tonight is actually the second page, which is twenty-six, twenty-seven. That is our first year that we will actively have a capital project levy. Across the top, Jolene has put in what we have available for our operating capital. Our long-term, uh, facility maintenance budget. And that's really what we've been operating on off of, uh, any capital improvements that we have. The next column, this EPL, that's the capital projects levy. And we have food service on there just because we're looking at doing some things in the commons, and we can use that money to purchase tables.
Know that we normally have a, a, a pretty healthy budget in the, in the food service. We can't use that for like flooring that's in there, and it has to be just food and.
Equipment, tables, staffing, food.
So one of our things that we took a look at, at first, as you can see on there, we have the high school gym roof and the performance gym roof. Those are the things that we really had talked about to our voters that we wanna keep, uh, ahead of, um, with them. And, um, I'll let Jolene and, and Jim talk a little bit about what we're waiting for and what we're looking at for the roofs.
So we reached out to Inspect to assess the high school gym and the performance gym roofs. Those are the two oldest on the list. And, uh, Jim's got them doing a, an infrared scan on both roofs so that we can see if there's any heat being lost and moisture being created in the, in the insulation and different things. So we're kind of in a holding pattern on that just to see if there's any issues coming up on the infrared. If there's not, we can potentially push those projects to the following year. I mean, if they can live through another year, we have no noticeable leaks currently. So that process being, and as we get farther through this, um, spreadsheet, we can keep talking on it. But that process being, it's cheaper to do them both at the same time, just for efficiency sake on the roofing contractors versus having someone come out for one summer to do one gym roof and want the next summer to do the next gym roof.
An HVAC system at the same time, isn't it?
Um, there is no HVAC on those two roofs.
Okay.
So one of the things that the board had looked at, like Joe Penny, was getting, um, AC in the performance gym and stuff. And now we're meeting with climate makers on Friday, and, um, if we looked at, at the unit, that would probably be on the, um, brown, set on the ground, so we don't have to do it. So it works out really well to do those two together and we not have to have a unit on either one of them.
I see if there's gonna be air conditioning in this office. There should be air conditioning where the, they have, uh.
Is this the, uh, first company that's coming in to look, or?
Uh, we have actually had two companies that came in and are giving us initially a quote about kind of taking a look at our roofs. We've had ICS here looking at the roofs, and we had Inspect coming to take a look. Inspect is, my understanding, the company that has been doing the roofs here and kinda has a pretty good knowledge of the roofs that we have and the work that needs to be in the date.
And they are, they are more the design and bidding process of things. They are not the actual contractors. So they put the project together, do all of the plans, do all the specs, then they put it out to bid, and they run the entire bid process for us, and then they come back and do the construction management piece of things, so they'll kind of give an oversight of the roofing contractors.
Is that the same with the rooftop unit?
The rooftop units would be through climate makers, just because they've done every other piece of our heating system. If we're going to change things out completely, we would get a second bid because, I mean, if you're changing the system completely versus.
Are you looking at, um, the amount per square foot?
I was just looking to see if we got bids for.
Cause we, um, we went very conservative, like, you need to replace the insulation. You need to replace, um, everything where hopefully, a lot of that stuff will be reused and repurposed. But we didn't wanna err on the side that's gonna be a lot cheaper than all of a sudden we have a lot of overages.
So is that a trunk system that we're gonna set on the ground and pump up over the top for, where does that plan on sitting?
Right behind the, uh, long hallway.
In between the two buildings? Okay.
Do we have to get a stand for that?
They'll set on a concrete pad. That's an air-cooled, air-cooled chiller.
Okay.
Which is kinda perfect because there's no classrooms back there. It won't be, I mean, the air-cooled chillers will do a little load, but it won't interfere because there's no classroom back there. That way there's no structural engineering involved.
And there's no snow load coming from the roof for them, where it's at?
And it can feed up to over a hundred feet of water line. If the infrared scan comes back with moisture in certain areas, they'll probably come up and do core cuts and see how bad the insulation is. If it's completely soaked, then it might be something that we wanna move forward sooner. If it's not wet at all, then I mean, you'll push it off.
Okay. Is that a fiberglass insulation or a styrofoam insulation?
It should be styrofoam. But there's new codes now, so you based on the insulation code, R factor, it might need to be built out. So if we have an R value of seventeen and the code is thirty, we might have to add another layer of R value to it. Which would help because if the good insul, if the insulation's, two-thirds of the insulation's still good, then we wouldn't have to buy all good new insulation, which could save money.
We could only hope.
Well, and.
You, you would show by now if, if the water was, if the, if there's a lot of insulation wet, since it gets screwed through to the deck, it would, it would be dripping. So since it's not getting a lot of reflects, there shouldn't be too many leaks.
We just wanted to do our due diligence and if we were gonna push something back a year, and that's all we're talking about, is pushing it back a year because we don't wanna get that spot where it's a must-have. So if we can push it back a year, we wanted to start doing some planning to bring here tonight, that this is what we'd be doing if we can push it back a year. Much thing goes into our flooring plan, and I'd like to guys to talk about that.
We've been working with pillar floors, uh, because they've done the floors in the rest of the building as well. I'm looking at different options. Um, current bid is on a five-millimeter LVT. And there are potential options that John is showing you.
Well, before, I'll, I'll let you have a good laugh. These, these were our first renderings. If you can see behind me of, um, gotta remember, I, cause I'm gonna put a thing, we were looking at a two-by-six tile when we picked this out.
This size?
Yeah, where, that's a little, little funky for, uh, for there. And then the whole cafeteria gets a little bit.
Oh, that's not even bad. Show the full cafeteria one.
I don't know, I kinda like it.
Oh, I don't have the full cafeteria one. Um, but we, sorry Chris, we crossed this one out because it, it, it was getting a little, ooh.
A little busy?
Yeah.
Out there. So we went back to them and, um, something possibly a little bit more.
Much better.
Like that. And those two colors are the, the big, um, ones that Jim has right there.
Didn't wanna go with the purple?
This would be the splash color, I call it. So.
So is the, is the hallway, go back up, Joe. Is the hallway now a different color than the ones out here too? Looks like you have three different colors. You have a gray, a light gray, and the hallway is a darker gray?
So there's a little conflict because when I sent the, the new renderings for pillars to, to do, I drew them up on a map like this instead of a map on the school.
Okay.
And I said, if it's confusing, let me know. And he said, yeah, I'm kinda lost. So he did the best he could with what the information I gave him. When he comes tomorrow to test water plugs in the grade hall and the cafeteria in number thirty-four, and then I can explain to him because what we originally wanted was kinda like the first rendering, not the zebra color, but with this as the center and maybe this is the border, and then put some squares, but not systematically around and not close enough to play hopscotch. And then add this as ten to fifteen percent splash color to break up the hallway and the columns.
Cause if you, like, um.
So it's hard to tell if that, I didn't, we didn't specify, I didn't specify that to be black.
But just right now with the patterns, and then we can kinda say this is kinda the colors that we're, we're looking at. This is what I was a little bit afraid of, is I don't want it to look like a long freeway or big long runways. We were looking at trying to get something in there to, um, break that up a little bit. But here's just some different renderings of, of those three colors. So if you have the white camel, you wouldn't even have to, uh, sweep, but every third day or so, you wouldn't even know it was on the floor. Yeah, and save us money. We're kinda looking at maybe not having any, uh, ribbonette, just have a solid color in there and have it broken up and see the difference. I like the breakup, I think you're right, because otherwise it does look like a runway.
Yeah, it looks narrow. Maybe that's the problem too, but.
Well, if you took the site, well, whatever, I don't use interior designers, I'm not, if you took it all and made it all one color, then it does, to me, it would, when you, when you lay that, it doesn't look like a long runway. When you put things on either side of it, then you have one color down the middle, then it looks like, when you pull the, I call it the,
Yeah.
The walkway of death from the altar to the door when they walk down, that's what kinda reminds me of.
I mean, those were some of the renderings we're doing, because our floor really has gotten bad this year. A year ago, when we were taking pictures for the capital projects levy, we could see where it was starting to crack. Now we have tile that's just chipping away and, and they're replacing some tile. It's looking bad, so the floor.
And this is why we're possibly looking at not doing the roofs and doing the, all the floor first.
Yep.
And we still need to have a company come out and look at, so we have expansion joints that are showing by the pillars across the commons.
Right here.
And to, towards the performance gym. And I was gonna meet with the company last week, but he had two project managers, I was six, so he had to cancel, so I could reschedule with them, but.
So they're showing, or we're gonna cut them in?
Well, we're gonna get some information from him, his suggestion. So the current flooring company can grind them out, fill them in with filler. Won't guarantee that they don't come back. He also suggested a different type of system where the, a company will come in and cut them completely out, fill them in with concrete and then pack foam on top of them, and then build up and then put up a, uh, thin expansion jack down the center of the commons to match up with the floor. So we're looking at, uh, getting some advice from another, another company.
So we.
We just don't wanna, we just don't wanna do this and then all of a sudden it cracks thirty to five years later.
So if we are, um, moving that big expense of the roof to the second year, we had a little bit more funding that, that we could use this coming year. Uh, so we looked at expanding the same floor work into the elementary locker bay area in the front of the elementary, which has some very old blue carpet in there, just, so once we get the flooring people here, let's do that through, um, so we got that pricing in there as well. And then with that, um, we started taking a look at lighting in our grade hall. We're still on fluorescents. Jim, you wanna talk about why we are being?
So effective January first, the state passed the law a year or so ago that the state of Minnesota, you can't purchase or sell any fluorescent pinwinds. So we couldn't even travel out of state and go buy them and bring them in, because that would be illegal. So we need to start, uh, it's catching many people off guard. Even homeowners, you can't buy them, can't, hardware stores can't sell them. Um, so after January first, you, you know, you, you can only buy so many. And, and during the summer, we probably go through a minimum of ten cases replacing bulbs. Both that are burnt out when we're doing a bulb picture. So talked to John a little bit about lighting and stuff and how we can save some energy and we're gonna, we brought in, uh, a company, a local company and.
And they're electric.
Quick gave us a, a walkthrough in one day, shooting from his hip. And we're gonna limit, so right now in the grade hall, we have on each walkway or pillar, there's two four-foot fluorescents and two bulbs. And then on top, there's one bulb in four-foot fluorescent. So in each pillar, there's six fluorescent light bulbs. We're gonna harvest those and keep them in a box if they don't have a burnt end that we can use as we move down the road till we get, obviously, things changed over to LEDs. We couldn't do, we, we would spend all of our levy money doing it.
Have you checked with, um, with, um, the electric company that, I know now I've got a smaller business, obviously, but I did that, and they paid me a percentage to switch them over. And then the other thing is you don't have, you don't have, uh, all the boxes anymore, um, what do you call those things?
Ballasts.
Yeah, you don't have ballasts anymore.
Yeah, I remember Electric when they were here said there's all kinds of rebates.
There's a lot.
That we'll be able to submit for that. So one, um, it's a little bit more aggressive on the LD, LED lights, um, but with the rebates and we can't get the bulbs, start harvesting the ones that we can save so that we can continue on with the project. I feel like that would also be.
And, and I did that too on the harvest part of it, and it doesn't work with crud. I mean, the bulbs, and, and I'm sure some of them will, but there's bulbs that look, they're fine. I take them out and I leave them sit over there, and then I go to put them in another one, and they just, they don't, they don't work.
It's kinda like putting these fan bulbs in.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there'll be some that'll work, but there's gonna be some that look good and they're not.
Yeah. So we're gonna open that up for bids then, or, you know, when you, if we decide to do this, or?
Is that for the lighting?
Yeah.
That's a conversation in the what the.
Well, I, I would assume because we're using taxable.
Yeah, depends upon pricing.
If it's over twenty-five thousand, you have to get multiple bids.
I just, I, I like, liked that we're using local contractors. I like all that stuff, but again, we, so when we, when we pitched this stuff, we, you know, we said we'd do our due diligence on it. So I just, and I know who you guys are, I just wanna make sure that we're talking about it for people that are listening and all that is going on, so. And, and I, and I, I did it, we were part of the, when, when Godfrey's did it, you know, they have it to where when you walk by, if there's no action, the lights go out. Um, and that ridiculous amount of money that they save there too, so. I know there's a big energy thing and, so.
And I talked to the company we're using, not only the same engine, not just using the company, but about motion sensing lights. And, um, I don't know, the salesman's not doing his education yet. We need to do some work on that. Cause we need to get them to a dam. We need walk-through lights. We don't need to be burning like, one of the projects we're looking at doing this year, yeah, that's still fungible is the high school gym to the LEDs. We need motions in there, because those burn from six-thirty in the morning till eleven o'clock when we're going to night. And there's times it's, and there should be just walk-through lights in there, but just like in the corners that stay on, and then you roll on. So.
So looking at, um, those things, and then at the same time, when, you know, during the ceiling and the flooring, we thought we'd bring, um, our painter contractor in and just have him give us a bid for, um, doing some painting in those same areas to see if we can have it connect with our, um, branding and marketing pieces and stuff. And again, we have it set up in sections so that, you know, we can only afford halfway down the hall or to a certain point. And that's as far as we go and head it on the, the next year. So we're gonna get some prices with that as well.
Um, back to lighting, one thing, I know you guys go to school board, uh, conferences and stuff, and there's a company out there that I'm not going to mention that will sell you that they can come in and do your whole school for LED, and you will save the money to do your whole school that you're paying for the roll that you take out to do the whole school. Don't go with that company. It doesn't work.
We don't buy anything at the conference.
What's that?
We don't buy anything at the conference.
We wouldn't make that decision without the people that's sitting at this table.
The guy has already called me like five times since I've been up here, and I just told him, no.
We tell Roger, he's gotta keep his hands in his pockets, nobody.
Yeah, it, it doesn't work. Because they come back and they, they'll guarantee it, but then they come back and say, well, you've increased activities. The, you know, they don't take a baseline.
That's fine. We, we wouldn't make, this board wouldn't make a decision that hasn't come from a recommendation.
I'm just saying, you don't buy their committee because it doesn't work.
Um, another summer project, I'll just quickly, we had these in the works before. They weren't really tied to the capital projects levy, is that we always try to renovate a couple of classrooms. We'll be working on the elementary steam room, which is classroom number thirty-four. That's one of our bigger rooms, a lot of cabinetry. Um, that's one of our bigger rooms, a lot of cabinetry in there. Um, some asbestos that we had to take care of on the countertops, and so, um, Jolene has that set for our operating Capitol, because that's where it was before all this, um, started. Um, and then we had, um,
Skip the DCD classroom.
Oh, yes, the DCD room, um, we have to, um, kinda redo the DCD room a little bit there and just, we don't have bathrooming facilities, we, we archimediating the needs of the students there. Remember a few years ago, we did the big one at the elementary room, and that was a complete gut, you know, um, tear down to the studs. Um, think this one is not, um, that intense, because basically we're just stealing a little bit of space for another room so that we can make a more handicapped accessible, um, bathroom area. And then to meet the needs, so, that's also there. Any questions? I mean, and some of this, like I said, still hinges on what we hear on the roof. Um, what we get for, um, you know, a couple of final bids that we wanted to, um, do as much done as we possibly can. Along with, uh, the commons flooring and, and real painting in there, um, we have budgeted, that's that twenty-five thousand dollars to look at kind of a different table setup in there. And kinda ask for a, a good layout, because we have that interesting spot, as all, um, small schools do, is that we're feeding three-year-olds or four-year-olds, three and four-year-olds, all the way up to twelfth graders in there, that you go around to a lot of high schools, if you watch sporting events, they got some really neat commons areas and tables set up, so Crosby, Harrington, it's got a nice area, Mariner's got a nice area, but they're dealing with just high school kids. So we're kinda trying to figure out what can we do that makes it pop a little bit more for our senior high students and when people are coming to attend events, so.
We, we use that stage area much up there for food service or anything like that, or?
We really don't use it much outside of, uh, Back to Basics uses it for a little presentation spot, um, and then our back-to-school workshop uses it a little bit. But we kinda thought maybe if we could kinda grab maybe some high-top tables and some stools up there, make it a little bit more senior seating up there, might be a little bit more appealing to them, so, looking at ideas.
Seems like a lot of wasted space to us.
It helps. Hopefully it'll help for food traveling.
And then, um, again, if you turn the next page for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, Jolene has moved over that working cost for next year, if, um, it looks okay, because that will be basically our project in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight. It, it doesn't leave a whole lot left for anything else.
Uh, don't see anything on twenty-six, twenty-seven for bus and van purchases, we're good?
Uh, we'll still be putting those in the ballot.
Just right now, we are focusing on capital projects, like, capital building projects.
I just saw listed here, so I just wanted to mention.
Place will go there, just in case there is money left over, we can offset it, but right now, focusing on capital projects.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Let us know what you find out. Superintendent Report.
Um, a couple of things that I just wanted to.
Jimmy, can stick around or if you got anything, anybody got anything for Jimmy?
No, I'm just thinking.
Okay.
Oh, how long does that gonna take?
I'm just making sure we got everything covered.
Oh, gotcha.
You can go ahead.
Just for, um, and some of this, we'll tie back a little bit into our facility stuff. I wanted to bring up is that, um, I handed out the option on twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar, the one before you is the one that we start after Labor Day and we get out, um, before Memorial Day. Um, a couple of marks on there, just, um, for referencing is, uh, December twenty-third would be, it's marked on there and I'm gonna call it a half-day, but it'll be a two-hour early out, so it's not quite a half-day. Um, and that'll be for students and staff, so that they can get traveling for the holidays, but we can mark it as a, um, the student contact day, and then the teachers will have a half-day, um, floating somewhere up there in, um, August between seventeenth and twentieth. That's their time that they can come in, set up their classroom and do, um, that work so that it stays at a hundred and eighty-two, um, teacher days. Um, the past four years, I was giving you a number of one seventy-two, it's actually been a hundred and seventy student contact days, and that's what it would be in, in this calendar moving forward, is also a hundred and seventy, um, student contact days with that. This is really the one that I would bring forward or recommending. Um, I shared with you the other ones, but there were too many cons to the community, um, to really suggest those, because we have a hospitality community that works the resorts and the campgrounds and things that, um, just I think would interfere too much with, um.
That was the feedback I was getting.
With, with the community, so me as well. We had just kinda took a look to see what it would look like, how we know what it looks like and how far it goes, and this is the one that I would, I would recommend. Um, and also, just some, um, contractual things just to be aware of. Um, we'd have a teacher in-service day in January on the eighteenth, that is Martin Luther King Day. We do that pretty common, um, the next one in February, we'd have an in-service day on February fifteenth, President's Day. Um, that is something that we have done in the past when we had to. Um, but it is a day where our custodial crew is off, our administrative assistants are off, because that is a paid holiday for, for them. We could add an in-service day, but since we already have, we're, um, five days at the beginning of the school year, and nobody really wants to come back after Memorial Day, pick that as kind of the, the least. I'm trying to schedule a meet and confirm meeting with the union so we can place the conference days, the PLC days and things before it comes to you, but I'm hoping to have that done before the December meeting, so that you can approve the, the full calendar. Any questions on the calendar, or does that look acceptable to you?
Sure, John.
Thanks for doing that.
Um, I also want, I thought this would be a great time for us to talk about the senior class request for an outdoor graduation ceremony, I mentioned it before, but, um, we didn't have a full discussion to see how much I should, um, direct the administration to be looking at, um, the possibility for it. Again, there's pros and cons, this is the time for us to discuss that.
I'll go first. I, I don't, I normally will go with board, well, with the board says, and there, to me, of all the cons and pros and cons, there's too many cons against having it out on a football field, or wherever the case may have it. Um, I would not support, you couldn't even talk me into supporting that with parking and logistics and seating and all the other stuff that goes on. I'm just, I'm not for it, weather, the whole nine yards, you know, even if you look at the ten-day forecast, you got tents and you got chairs and you got things digging into tracks and you got, I mean, you won't be able to hear, and it's hard enough to hear in the gym and all the things, it's, I'm just, I'm not a fan. And, uh, I've been, been at a few outside and I just, I'm not, I'm not for it, so. Um, it's, it's, there's seven of us sitting here, um, so I, you guys can decide, you know, either way, but I, I am not for it. I just see too many detrimental things that can go wrong that day. And as far as the staff cleaning up, yeah, there's always people there to put it together, but it's getting tore apart.
Yeah.
Um, that's the biggest thing, so, those are my, just my, if you want the laundry list of things that I, I can see going bad for this, I'll get them all, but there's just, those are just a few that I don't see it's a great idea.
That's the damage to the, to the possible, what, the football field, I'll say. Um, there's not a lot of seating there without putting seating in. And then when you're putting seating in, now we don't have no elevated seating, seating like we do in the gym where we have, you know, you have them sitting down and then all of a sudden you got some elevation, so we don't have a lot of that either. So you're gonna have a lot of people on the same level, meaning they're not gonna be able to see very good.
You can't put anybody on the track.
Right, and then, um, the acoustics would be a huge thing, I, I, I can't hardly believe, and maybe I'm wrong, but I can't hardly believe that the, uh, the choir or the band would be all that excited about it. Um, but anyway, I, I see a lot of the same hurdles. Um, and then the other thing, we're, we're putting the custodial staff really on the spot on a what-if. You know, I mean, so, to me, I, it's a great idea in theory, but, uh, but there's a lot of things that just don't seem like it would work very well, but that's my, my feeling on it.
Jim, do you have any opinion, as you know a lot about, obviously, what goes on out there on the track?
Been involved with both setups in past school districts where there was ten times more kids, like, five hundred kids, and we had to set up in both gym and outside. Had been involved with last-minute cancellation, we're moving inside. Last cancellation, we're moving back outside, wiping the chairs off. Um, pulled many custodians from many other schools to help set up that day. Out here, um, my only input would be is if you wanted to go with it, I would say put the parents and, and stuff in the stands so they're elevated, or bring the kids closest to the track as possible. If you were to put them on the same level, then you're not gonna see them. They'll aeriate the field pretty good with your chairs, especially if it's a wet week, but I, I, I know that people like to be outside, but when they say it's not gonna rain, it rains. I've learned of that up here. Start a project and say, oh, it's gonna be sunny and beautiful, and all of a sudden it's pouring five minutes later, so. I just don't know if we have the s- staff availability and that to make that work, and, and there's a lot of scrambling. I don't know what date graduation is this year, it would have to be decided like three or four days in advance. And there'd be a lot of perfuming, but, yeah, we're doing it outside, and then all of a sudden, there's a thirty percent chance of rain, there's a fifty percent chance of rain, let's go down to the lawyer and check it all. We, I just don't have availability for it.
I'm of the same opinion that the logistics would make it not the best scenario.
I mean, if it was a beautiful day like this weekend or a couple of weeks ago, great. My daughter's wedding was outside at a resort, fall of the year, beautiful, the best beautiful day in the world, they could have had a pouring, freezing, cold rainy day, but, um.
We had three of them this summer, two were raining, one was not.
All right, and it's, 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 it's the resources that really contributes. Um, I don't, I think the, if, if we knew it was gonna be sunny and beautiful, I think it would work, but I don't think, we can't guarantee that.
We don't have enough equipment to, to set both up.
That's second.
You'd have to rent chairs, you'd have to rent tables and, um, yeah, a lot.
Yeah.
There'd be a lot of expense to it, to set up both.
Yeah.
And then, still school's going on. All that has to be taken down, because not everybody gets out at the same time. So if we did do it outside and inside, then we got double pickup before school starts again, so. Could consider, I mean, financially, it could be a big impact on it over time, just to make it happen to custodial. Could pick up, set up. So, that's just my opinion.
So, the students that came and asked for that consideration, was it purely because they wanted to be outside, or I'm wondering, like, we had talked about doing some changes to graduation in the gym. Is some of it because they wanted to see changes?
I, I think it was more that they.
Across the board, or?
I think it was more that they, you know, graduation was outside at one time, and so kinda thought about bringing that back. You know, I don't know all the reasons why it moved ins- inside, I can guess that was a lot of what you had just, just talked about, um, with that, and so they were just kinda wanted to see if the board would support moving it back outside, um, with that. I, I think, you know, we can take a look, um, at our setup in the main gym, uh, performance gym, just to see, is it the best setup, you know, for maximum seating and, and visibility?
And sound.
With that. You know, placement of the speakers and, and everything, that, to see if there's some things that we can tweak in, in there. I, I think that's all they were, they wanted some consideration and, and for that, that, you know, uh, if you want us to inform them, or if the, the board would like to write a letter to them, um, can do that as well.
I could drop the letter, if that's what, if that's what the board wants, again, I, I, I don't, I don't want it to, you know, there's just a lot, and you know, we can give all the reasons why, and, and then there's all the reasons why we should or not, I, I just.
Because part of our original thoughts were that they came and like, can we stream it out there? Do we have the, the sound out there and stuff, and, um, we do have the technology side available out there, but it, the logistics is more than just that, it's seating, it's parking, it's handicap accessibility, um, for that, because I believe we can seat more in our performance gym than we can on those bleachers out there.
Oh, my fault.
I would think. You know, right now, so you, so you're talking a lot of seating that would have to be set up, which would be same level as the graduates, and so it would be tough to see.
And it's a little bit further to walk and some, a little harder walk-in for people that'll walk that grade, so then they're gonna wanna just drive their car and try to be able to see.
Yeah.
You know, I could see that happening. I mean, it's just, I just think for them, it's, we need to just, just say that it, it's a great idea, but there's just too many things that can go wrong and it's gonna cost a lot. Um, it's not that we wanna say no, but, um, the chances of it being a perfect day, you know, what is that, one in five? You know, I mean, is it gonna be too hot, is it gonna be too windy, is it gonna be raining, is it gonna be, is it gonna be too windy to where all the caps are flying off, I mean, you know, I mean, there's just, there's just a lot, um, you know, I mean, I just think to be realistic and to be fair to everybody, uh, we need to, to tell everybody a lot sooner than later.
Well, I was glad that they came in and asked, we really complimented our seniors of thinking they had anything coming in and talking about it, and so that you could have this discussion, so.
Would it, would it be helpful if, or would they even have a desire to help plan what this graduation, or do they help plan the graduation?
I don't know if they've had, I mean, this, the setup has been that setup.
Forever?
For a long time.
It's, it's changed, it's changed a little bit, um, and, and that I can remember, before COVID, it was different than it is now. Um, but just in, you know, you, you brought it up just as far as hearing-wise, you know, I, I think there's a, even where the board sits, it's hard to hear all the stuff that's going on, I think there could be some better things.
That's because of your fan, though. Especially that fan placement, it really changed it.
Okay, here's the other thing too, is we're gonna have more in those first few rows, because it's.
Yeah, all, just all staff.
All staff. So we're already, we're probably gonna be adding two rows there too. Well, at least a good row, I would say.
Did you wanna draft something then to them?
Sure.
I, I think, just so that they know that.
Yeah, it's, that's fair.
Yep.
It's fair to bro.
Okay.
Um, then, um, just wanted to double-check with Nikki, Roger, and Chris, that you should have received an email confirming registration for, um, the MSBA conference here. And then I also wanted to bring up, um, some discussion for the strategic plan review, we had talked about starting that up in possibly in March, if people were available. Um, I got pricing earlier in the school year and I, we just had a lot of things on our, on our plate to take that on. But I just thought, you know, for discussion for you, um, right now might be okay. Um, I do have, again, the, the prices here, the vendors that, um, bid, uh, on the project with us, and how much you want to do, because there's a big price difference. and how much you want to do, cause there's a big price difference between them. Teamworks is, um, they charge nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for it. It's a very comprehensive plan and they do come on-site and work with us here. Partner Ed is eighteen thousand, one hundred. They are also a very comprehensive plan, um, and would be, um, in-person for that. MSBA, the price drops, um, quite a bit, that's ten thousand, six hundred dollars, but it's completely virtual. They will never be here on, on-site. Big River, uh, we use them, uh, I think, uh, I know we did the last one, but I think they've done a couple of them here. They gave us three different options. First one, three thousand dollars, um, and that's them just training virtually, um, our team here and we run and do the whole thing. Option two was five thousand dollars where they train us here, we do all the initial work, they finalize the plan. And ten thousand dollars, um, Big River completes the entire project, but again, they're not on-site, um, for that. Another option would be if you just wanted to kind of tweak what we currently have. Sourcewell said that they have some people that are just trained in facilitation of commu-, of working through things and asking the question. I do not have a price for that, that would probably be one of the most economical ones, but I don't know if it'll give us what we want in a final plan.
Has anybody been here to, on the strategic plan you have?
I have.
I have.
I worked on the other a little bit with Antico, we started on that.
So with the, the thought processes was, is the last time we went with more of a, a virtual type thing, you know? I, I don't see that the interaction from the community and I don't see that that, I mean, yeah, it's, it's a little bit more money. And, you know, as, as you're going through that, I just, people don't get onto the virtual stuff and, you know, in the action and in the, if we're gonna, you know, if we're, I don't wanna say gut it and, and do it, but we're gonna tweak it fine. But if we're gonna have, redo our strategic plan, I think we need to have help. I think we need bodies here, I think we need to invite people here and not have somebody on a screen talking to the audience. I believe that, you know, I wasn't, the last go-around, I didn't think was probably the best. I mean, we got, we got a great strategic plan, but I don't think it was the best.
Well, it says we had a halfway decent one to start with. I think we had a lot to work with from the first time we did it. We did a lot of interaction with, with, with more people and the community and so forth. And I think, so the last one was more of a tweak than it was and I think we got by with that. I think you either got two options, either we just figure out what we really want and we all buy in and we just, we have meetings and whatever, or we have somebody else with the whole crew and people here. I, I agree with you on the, the virtual part. Virtual, I'll, I'll sleep and Roger will eat.
I'll eat my spaghetti.
Yeah, he'll be eating his spaghetti and we won't get anywhere. But no, I'm serious, I, I really, I agree with you, I think you need somebody here to spark conversations, to write conversations. It's either, in my mind, it's either let's go the real cheap way or the real expensive, you know, the, the more expensive way where we literally have bodies here, in my mind.
I was at Eden Prairie, I was on the strategic plan program when they rewrote the strategic plan, they used Teamworks. And it was pretty intense, I mean, they had somebody on-site, it was. Been a while, but I, I know for sure it was two straight days, maybe three, but it was from morning to night. And we, there was, there was a group of people that didn't leave till everything was speed. Said we're not leaving until this group of people decide what is his plan, what the headline is of this plan. And there was probably in that district at that time, it was the largest.
Detailed proposal from Teamwork.
Or largest high school.
And what partner.
In that group, there was probably a minimum of fifty people, teachers, community members, administration. They kind of were on handpicked, but they got you to talk. They got you down deep and emotionally talking. There were several breakouts, several breakouts and you worked on committees and, and, uh, it was a pretty, I mean, if you want a good strategic plan, Teamworks will give you one. They'll get you to talk.
Here's the thing too, is when we had the open negotiations, that, that gentleman asked questions that we wouldn't nor, normally never ask. You know, the thought process and it, it, it did, it provided us with a lot of, well, I never thought of that. Or if we did, you know, I can't think of it, for instance, right now, but it was like, okay, well, we didn't think of that. Or this is the perception of what's going on, did you, do you understand the per? Again, there's a lot of things that we talk about, um, in a work session and then we go to a, a meeting. And if you don't watch the work session and you just watch the meeting, it doesn't look like we have a lot of dialogue. Well, everybody has meetings that we all go to throughout the month and whatever the case may be. I think that, and John has a proposal from each one of us, so if we can make some copies and get it out or.
Yeah, I can.
You get, just email to, I mean, I don't need a paper copy, but.
Those are the, um, the two, um, Teamworks and Partner Ed, those are the two companies that are, are the more pricey ones, but also the most comprehensive ones. So if you, I can send those.
Well, here's the thing, okay, so you, you, you're spending a, a lot of money. But if you do it right, it's really like you're doing it twice because the next time it's just a tweak. Because you've got the, a good product there. And I feel like that's what we, we did the one, the one prior.
Yeah.
And the next one was kind of a tweak. So if you look at it that way and you do to go, we go to one of the more comprehensive and we do a, have a really good product, it's really gonna last a lot longer and it's gonna take less to fix it down the road too.
You're gonna spend nineteen to twenty now, or you're gonna spend ten, then you're gonna spend ten again.
Yeah.
And, and so, again, you're getting everybody to have, you know, we wanna have, when we did the parking lots, let's get them all done at the same time because we get the equipment here, we get everybody here and we get it done and we get it done right. We're doing the same thing with the rest. I just, I just don't think the community, again, and, and that's what we want, we want people to be here to help give some direction to the board of what we, what our vision is, what this vision is, what the teachers' vision is, we're gonna have students' interaction here, and I don't think you're gonna get it from a computer screen, I really don't.
Yeah, and I think if we didn't do, go with like one of those companies, we're just gonna end up with the same plan that we have, maybe with some tweaks. But I think if we want to have a different product, a better product, it's gonna take something like that to get us there.
Well, and I was, and I'm, I'm not endorsing them, don't get me wrong, but when I was at Godfrey, we taught the strategic plan too. And I looked back at the very strategic plan that we put when we first got there, it was still pretty well in seventh place, seven, eight years later, a couple of little tweaks, but it was still better. That was what you made up. So again, I'm not endorsing them, I'm just saying they were pretty intense.
So it sounds like I will send these out to you. Is this the type of the direction that you would like to go? Again, this isn't a decision-making, but a little bit more comprehensive plan, cause then I'll reach out to both of these companies again and just find out what their availability is. I know one of them was pretty much booked until next fall, so it wouldn't be something that we would be starting that spring. But if that's who we wanna go with, I don't think we're, we would have to bail on them if that's the case.
I think, I think, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, if it's the right thing to do, waiting till fall isn't the bad thing. I, I think, I think that if, if it's the, the meat, potatoes of the, the whole meal and this is what we want, if, well, we'll just settle because they can do it in April. I, I think that's a, I think it's a, we've already set ourselves up for failure.
Yep.
Um, and then the last thing I have is just that, uh, we are set for our next work session, um, in December, which will be December fifteenth. And that will be the truth and taxation meeting at six o'clock. That's all I have for you.
Do we have a regular meeting then on the third?
Um, yeah, we have a regular meeting on, um.
Can you remind me that six o'clock or two or not?
Yeah, December first, we have a regular school board meeting. Okay.
Um, at this time, any questions for John? All right. At this time, we are going to close the meeting, uh, per Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point oh five for a presentation on findings and recommendations regarding a level-three gr, a level-two grievance, um, for the board. So, um, need a motion and a second for that. Motion by Nikki.
A second.
Second by Leslie. Discussion, appearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries, six twenty-eight.